Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 11th regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live remote oral public comment via the city Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. Members of the public desiring to provide public comments at the meeting are encouraged to attend the meeting in person. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on that item. Thus, if you desire to speak on an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a session section on the agenda entitled "Public Communications", which is for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting if necessary. When I open the public comment period on any item and you wish to provide comment on that item, use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak use that raised hand feature or press star nine. If you're attending in person, of course, you don't have to raise your hand or press star nine, but we do ask that you please complete a speaker identification cart, which are at the back of the room and they're yellow. You can't miss them. We should have pens back there as well, and hand that to the city clerk. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings, and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID and password are, they're shown at the bottom of the screen. The meeting ID is 851-9921-6654 and the passcode is 576-563. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways: YouTube Live, visit the city's YouTube channel, Cable Broadcast Comcast Channel 28, Rossmore Channel 26, Wave Channel 1028, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You can also livestream us online on the city's website. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Darling.
Here.
Councilmember Haskew.
Here.
Councilmember Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Here.
Mayor Francois.
Here. Next on our agenda, we are going to present a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'd like to read a few of the recitals from the proclamation and then we're going to invite Laura Owens, who's joining us by Zoom, to join our discussion. And the proclamation reads that whereas domestic violence is a prevalent social problem, significantly impacting the health and well-being of Contra Costa residents, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging. It directly affects people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in California. According to the, well, in 2021 in Contra Costa County, 24 law enforcement agencies reported over 2,700 domestic violence-related calls for service, and 864 of those calls involved the use of a weapon. According to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, one in 11 female teens and one in 15 male teens reported experienced sexual dating violence in the last year. Whereas the county works to raise awareness so individuals will become advocates and will take action to prevent domestic violence in their communities. Now therefore, I, Matt Francois, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October in 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Wilk, to introduce Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Mayor. So last year as mayor, I had the honor of issuing a proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And shortly afterwards, I heard about the story of a young woman, Laura Owens, who was a victim and is a survivor of domestic violence. It really hit home with me and it affected me because she's about the age of my daughter, maybe just a couple of years older. And most of us have listened to her father for years on the radio, Radio Hall of Fame broadcaster Ron Owens. She seemed to have the perfect life and showed it on social media. Her TED Talk and subsequent interviews have told a very different story, and I reached out to her as a Bay Area native to ask if she would consider accepting the proclamation on behalf of domestic violence victims everywhere. I'm glad to report that she said, of course, and I'd like to introduce Laura Owens to accept this proclamation for Mayor Francois and the City of Walnut Creek.
There we go. It is truly such an honor to accept this proclamation, and I wish I wasn't doing it because that would mean I wouldn't be a victim, but then again, if I wasn't speaking out, then I could just be another statistic. My name is Laura Owens, and I grew up thinking that domestic violence happened to other people and could never happen to me. If you had told me when I was 18 that I would grow up and give a TEDx talk advocating for victims because of my own experience, there's no way I ever would have believed you. In 2016, I began a relationship with a man who, for the first several months, didn't put a foot wrong, and I was so proud to introduce him to my parents, including my dad, Ron Owens, who his family had listened to on the radio for years and years. So naturally, things went really well when he met my parents. But it wasn't long after that that his behavior started to change towards me, and he started off being verbally abusive, but soon it turned physical. I was with this guy who my friends thought was a big catch, and rather than reaching out to them for support, I continued this narrative of being in a perfect relationship. No one could have told from my social media that I was in any danger, but I was lucky enough to be in the right place at the right time, and that's what my TEDx talk is about, about a chance encounter with a stranger who gave me the courage to leave. But unfortunately, not every victim gets out in time and gets to call themselves a survivor. Research has shown that one in four women will be physically abused in their lifetime, so I don't understand why we're not talking about it. It's my deepest wish that this message be spread throughout the city, throughout the state, throughout the world, because if we can start having these uncomfortable conversations about domestic violence, we can increase awareness, and from there, we can save lives. So thank you so much to the City of Walnut Creek for giving me the privilege of accepting this proclamation, and I hope that many other cities will follow suit.
Laura, I just want to thank you for your courage and your bravery for speaking out on this issue. Councilmember Wilk forwarded your TED Talk. It was quite powerful.
Oh, thank you.
What resonated with me is a line that you said is, "Each time that we see the people around us as members of humanity, not as strangers, we take a step toward restoring hope for others. We become links in a chain of kindness." And that's clearly very symbolic in terms of your relationship with Nancy on that airplane and the other people who observed what was happening to you and offered out a hand for help. It still took your courage to come forward and tell your story, and you did it in a very powerful way, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will go ahead and get that proclamation to you, and we'd welcome to see you at any future council meeting or social occasion here in Walnut Creek.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much for letting me be a part of this.
Getting a round, a wide round of applause here in the chamber.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. You take care, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Bye.
Next on the agenda is a presentation on the drought update by the East Bay Municipal Water District and Contra Costa County Water District, and at this time, I have the pleasure of inviting Director Coleman from East Bay MUD and President Davila from the Contra Costa Water District to provide an update on the current drought situation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Francois, council members, staff, and citizens of Walnut Creek. If we can go to the next, well, actually, real quick. East Bay MUD, I represent Ward 2. It has about 211,000 people in it. Basically, it's parts of Walnut Creek and Pleasant Hill in the East Bay MUD service area, and Lafayette, all the way down the Santa Ramon Valley and everything on the east side of 680 in Santa Ramon. So it's a large area to get to represent, which I'm honored to do that. Next slide, please. Oh, I get to do it even better. Caught. The other way, yeah. Better put my glasses on, too, you know? Thank you very much. So where our water comes from? It's snowmelt, almost 93% of it, and it comes into the McCullough watershed from Pardee Reservoir. So if you've ever gone skiing at Bear Valley and looked north or Kirkwood and looked south, the McCullough watershed is right there. We capture the water at Pardee. We put it across 90 miles of pipeline concluding the delta into Lurkey Park Walnut Creek, where that first part of treatment takes place before it's distributed throughout our service area. We are responsible for 4,200 miles of pipeline, and that pipeline is essentially going from Oakland Coliseum to the Wrigley Field back to the Oakland Coliseum. That's our responsibility. Some of it is really old, the pipeline, some of it's well over 100 years old, in fact. Next year's our 100th anniversary, so we're excited about what the future may hold, but at the same time, we're holding on to a lot of old pipes that constantly need maintenance and everything else as well. So, water supply. You guys wanted to talk the drought. Are we in drought? Absolutely, we're in a drought. Third year of a drought. We don't know whether we'll be in a fourth year of a drought. To put it in perspective, we had our lowest level of precipitation from January to June, both in our watershed up in the Sierra Nevadas as well as here. It had never been in our 100-year history that low, and it had a huge impact as a result of that, and we're somewhat lucky where we are right now, and you'll see from here how much water we have in storage. So the bar on the right, the 2022, shows how much water we have. We're forecasted to have about 510,000 acre-feet of water in storage with the end of the month, but part of that is due to the fact that we brought in 46,000 acre-feet of water that we bought elsewhere. We brought it into the Freeport facility. It came from other parts of the state, and we brought it in, and then the amount of water that people have been conserving as well. But you can see, 2021, we actually had less water in storage at this point in time than we do today. And again, a large part of that is due to what people are doing individually and collectively here and the amount of water we brought in. Now, that water does cost money that we brought in, but at the same time, it's an insurance policy that I think is important to be able to have that water available to make sure that we protect our customers, whether they be the homeowner or the businesses that rely on that water. But we have also declared a drought stage two, so we've asked for 10% mandatory water reductions. We have an excessive use penalty ordinance under Section 28. There's restrictions on water use. And on July 1, we put an 8% drought surcharge on. That 8% drought surcharge will disappear when the drought is over, and we're not looking at having to procure additional water. That's on top of the 5% rate increase we already had on our water supply. And so what we're trying to do is we're hoping for the best, preparing for the worst. It's really the best way to describe what we're doing today. And so the water comes with a cost. We'll be spending over $20 million between 2022 and 2023. The reason I'm blending the two, we're now in our 2023 water year. As of October 1st, we go from, that's the water year, and that's how it's delineated here in California. That's where the water came from. We're not really counting on potentially much water from the Bureau of Reclamation next year because their situation is so dire if you look at some of the federal system reservoirs and so on. Now, we hope that it'll be very wet. We hope there'll be a lot of snow and rain, but we can't count on that. And again, that's why we're buying the water and storing it, and that's why we're asking people to conserve as much water as possible. So we're asking people to irrigate efficiently. That means three times a week, no more than. If you have a leak, find it, fix it. If you have that leak and you have a plumber come and fix it, let us know. And let's say hypothetically, your water bill normally is $100 every two months, and it's all of a sudden it's $600 because of a leak. That delta of $500, we'll split the difference with you because you fixed the leak. So if you have a leak, you get it fixed and get it, have a plumber do it, and you're going to get some of that money back as well. And be mindful of water use, how you use water. I still use it, take a military shower, although I was never in the military, and in reality, you actually get cleaner. Look at it this way, put soap on your body versus just running off your body right away when you're running that water. And so you actually will get cleaner and you'll use a heck of a lot less water. I almost said the wrong word, contrary to what the mayor said. So here's some of the rules on how you should work, use water and not use water. Our website, www.ebmud.com/conservation will tell you exactly what, I dropped my page, thank you, what you, how to use water. If you need help, get ahold of us, and we'll work with you. As a property owner, we also have rebates up to $2,500 now for single-family homes. Thank you very much. And we will work with you to help you reduce your water. We're not trying to penalize people in a way like we used to with the brick. We're trying to use a more of a carrot approach now. Not everybody would agree with that, but that's what we're doing. So the drought surcharge, we talked about, it's only applied to potable water for recycled water. That is not part of it. And basically, that drought surcharge is helping us recover our drought expenses. In addition, it's helping us buy that water from outside our service area. So we're not actually, the water that we're buying is not being added on to your bill as it is. It's coming from the drought surcharge and from our reserve supply. Here's how the excessive use penalty works. If you go over their threshold, which is 1,646 gallons per day per household, which is actually much more generous than it was in the last drought. The last drought was under 1,000 gallons a day. So we acknowledge that a lot of people have already done a lot of work trying to conserve water, and we also know that each subsequent drought is more difficult for people to conserve using water because they've installed irrigation devices, their landscaping, how they use water has changed, and so we're trying to be reflective of that. The first exceedingly warning went out. You saw something in the newspaper about two weeks ago, how three people were notified. You should expect next time that comes out, it's going to be a much higher number, and we're only putting the names out and addresses out when asked under the Public Records Act request. Personally, I don't like it because I think, quite frankly, shaming is one thing, but it also, we have enough people who are off balance, is maybe a good way to say it. They get the name, the address of somebody, and then potentially, they could be in harm, and that's my biggest concern with that. So questions? I can answer any, or I can do it after Ernie speaks. One thing I would like to mention, on October 26, between 11 and 1, we will be working East Bay MUD with the Central Sanitary District, and Rossmore is actually taking the lead on a water future for central Contra Costa County. It's going to be held in Lafayette, and it's free, and there'll be lunch, and there will be a way for you to learn what we're looking at doing for recycled water and other water options and trying to find funding sources to be able to diversify and broaden our supply even more. And I, again, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to represent you. So I don't know how you want to do this.
Thank you, Director Coleman. I think we'll hear from President Davila first because the questions, I think, are probably going to be broader.
Okay, sure.
And not agency-specific.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
See, hopefully I've got the control for this. The button for that is?
Yes, it's the arrow.
The arrow, great. Mayor Francois and members of City Council and citizens of Walnut Creek, what a great honor it is to be with, for you again. This is always one of my favorite experiences, to be here with you and to talk about what's happening, not only about the drought, but also what's happening at Contra Costa Water District. As a former resident of Walnut Creek and still has a big vested interest in the overall care and quality of the city, I think you're all doing a fantastic job. I wanted to let you know that. Many people don't realize that Contra Costa Water District is a special district. It isn't part of the county. As a special district, the representatives, there's five members of the board that are residents of the Contra Costa Water District. I'm President Davila, and I represent the Walnut Creek area, Clayton, most of Concord, and a little bit of Pleasant Hill. Working with John, John takes care of about half of Walnut Creek, and I take care of the other half in terms of making sure that we're providing you good quality water in your area. One of the great things about Walnut Creek is we have a furthered our Walnut Creek connection at Contra Costa Water. Aside from the fact that I'm a former Walnut Creek Transportation Commissioner, Rachel Murphy is our new general manager, and Rachel Murphy has 26 years of industrial experience, 15 years at Contra Costa Water, and she's also the former city engineer for the City of Walnut Creek. So Walnut Creek has very big roots established within the overall water district, and we're very proud of her. She was a nationwide search regarding our general manager who retired, Steve Welch. We're excited about having her lead us into the next generation for the next coming years at CCWD for a heck of a long time. In terms of our service area, Contra Costa Water District serves about half a million people. We provide retail water, means we provide water to the tap. In other cases, we provide water that's provided to individual cities that do their own treatment and their own distribution. We have over 700 miles of pipelines and over 50 miles of canal systems, over 30 reservoirs and pump stations that we take care of as part of the system. The light green area is the area where we provide treated water to the tap. The areas that are not light green are the areas where we provide raw water in which the cities do their own treatment system. Part of the key thing that you see here, a dark blue line that crosses through this entire area is the Contra Costa Canal System, the Contra Costa Canal itself, which is the principal distribution for water in the area. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that a little bit later on. The key thing here is we get all of our water from the delta. We have a variety of intakes, straws, into the delta, and what we do is when the water flows into the delta, we use those intakes to make sure that we're able to secure the best water quality that's available as it travels through the delta. This is important because the water quality can change dramatically during the year, and so we always are monitoring the water quality from the various intakes to make sure that we're tapping the best amount of water to provide the system, and also, more importantly, to also make sure we're putting the best water quality in Los Feliceros reservoir. How are we doing overall with the drought? And well, Director Coleman said it all in terms of we're in incredible historic drought. This is our third year of drought conditions for us. Our water comes from the Central Valley Project, federal water, that uses the, is stored in Lake Shasta, where all of our water comes from. It travels through the delta. We use those intakes that I talked about, and then we use that to fill our reservoirs and provide water. Lake Shasta right now is at 33% full. Fortunately for us, Los Feliceros, because we've been pumping like crazy to keep that reservoir level as high as possible, is 50% full. We think we're in pretty good shape should we have another dry year, but we're being cautious. And part of the reason why we've been able to, we believe, be well-prepared for the drought is because we have an incredible community that responds exceptionally well whenever there's a demand or a request to conserve water. They do an exceptional job. The community's done absolutely incredible work from that. But they also made an incredible investment in Los Feliceros. That allows us, has given us some breathing room, so that even with Lake Shasta being low, we can provide that water from Los Feliceros when we need it. So it's a very phenomenal system. It's what's keeping us, pardon the pun, a little bit above water. How are we responding to the drought? Aside from the major rebate programs that I'll talk about in a second, on June 15, the Contra Costa Water District implemented a temporary drought surcharge. It's 15% increase to address impacts and the cost of the drought. We increased the charge overall to all customers at that level, with the understanding that if we're, if the customer was able to achieve a savings of 15%, which is the goal that the governor had requested, they would see no impact in their bill. So it was the incentive to try to really push for conservation. We also added an additional incentive. If you, the single-family home was able to achieve residential use before, below 200 gallons per day, we also gave them an efficiency rebate that we had from, that we use from non-rate revenue that the district gets. Incredibly enough, and this is, again, the incredible achievement of our community being responsive, 40% of single-family homes achieve the 200 gallon per day goal, and they're getting that efficiency rebate. And again, the key thing here is customers who achieve that 15% reduction in water use don't see an increase in their bill. This has been very good, the public education program, and this has kept us in really good shape and preparing us for yet another dry year. This is one of the things that I, is one of my favorite slides, and I try to use this wherever I can. This is what a typical water use for a single-family home. 50% of the water that's used for landscaping is used outside. Inside, it's faucets, showers, clothes dryers, toilet use, dishwasher, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the different uses that make up water consumption for the typical home. And the reason why this is important is when we look at rebates, this is why we push rebates for lawn-to-garden type rebates, smart irrigation controllers, water use that we do, water use evaluations for the commercial property, for commercial folks, and we also do that for the residents as well. These are the things that have a maximum bank for the buck in terms of saving water for the community. So these have been very, very effective. I got to tell you, the one thing that really has been incredible for me has been the Flume Smart Water Monitor. It's one of the rebates that we provide. It allows customers to monitor their own water use using an app. It takes about 15 minutes to install. Did it myself, and it works fantastically well. The app gives you an indication of what your water use is, interior and in the exterior of your home. More importantly, tells you if you've got a leak and very effectively tells you right away. So there's a lot of great programs that we have for conservation that have been very effective. One of the most common questions we get is how is it possible that within drought situation that we're able to continue to facilitate housing in the various cities that we serve? This is a slide to try to answer that question. If you look at the overall population growth, we're now at over 500,000 people that we're serving. That's the dash line. So that's the population of our area that we serve from 2006 to over to 2020. You can see that we've had about a 30% increase in population over that period of time. If you look at the blue line, you can see the consumption is going down. So we've been more efficient in the use of water in our homes and other, in other commercial properties as well, and those savings have allowed us to make sure that we're prepared for recycled water, we're prepared for meeting future demands. And by the way, that also includes 10-plus percent of recycled water. We integrate recycled water in all of our planning, and we work very carefully with Central Sand and others to make sure recycled water is integrated for all the major projects that are coming up, including Concord Naval Weapons Station. One of the big projects we have underway is the Canal Modernization Project, where this is an 80-year-old canal that leaks about anywhere from 8% to 10% of the water flow that goes through the canal system. When we have major storms, we have anywhere from 50 to 200 landslides. When we have major storms, we have anywhere from 50 to 200 landslides that we've got to take care of. It leaks, it breaks. It's one of the most important programs that we're now financing and funding to replace the canal, put it in the pipeline so that we're ready also for earthquakes and also enhance public safety. We don't have to, we minimize the risk of drownings and other accidents that occur along the canal system. So we're excited about this project. It's integrated into our rate model. The other thing that's happening is Los Carros expansion is happening underway. This is a great project where we're working, the Los Carros reservoir will now be, part of it will be a regional facility that will be used to enhance water supply for AK customers, including East Bay Mud and John Coleman, who sits on the JPA, Joint Powers Authority with us. We're working very closely with our partners to enhance regional water supply for our area and we're very excited about this program. It's being funded predominantly with state funds, state grant funds, federal funding, and then funding by the partners that will be paying for the cost. Contra Costa Water District, our existing customers will not be impacted financially, nor will the water quality be degraded by this expansion. Finally, if you find out more about rebates or any information I gave you, please go to our website, ccwater.com, or give us a call. We'd be happy to help with any needs that our citizens may have. And that concludes my presentation. I hope you found it helpful.
Very helpful. Thank you very much President Avila. Any questions for Director Coleman or President Avila on the state of water? Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much both of you for being here this evening. And President Avila, you did respond to the question that we frequently get asked, including my husband the other night, who said, why are we building and allowing more people to have, you know, housing when we don't have enough water? And I actually cited two statistics that I believe Mr. Coleman, you stated in one, which was population in the mid-'70s versus today versus water consumption and what percentage of water is used by whom?
Sure. In the, our drought of all droughts was 1976. Our population was about 1.1 million, now 1.4, so it's over a 30% increase, yet our water usage is down 54% from what it was in 1976 to today. And a lot of the housing that's being built is actually, it's high density, so there's less, so that's actually a driving factor and as well as efficiencies. But yeah, our usage is down 54%, but our population is up by over 35%.
So where is most of our water used in this state?
Well, it's used throughout. About 50% goes into, for environmental benefits and there's a benefit to that as well for the fisheries and industry. A lot of it goes for agriculture and agriculture is also our biggest industry in the state from a trade standpoint as well as a tax revenue standpoint. We're fortunate, CCWD and East Bay Mud and some other local agencies, we've done a great job, I believe, diversifying our portfolio of water. And I always like to tell people, think of your water supply as a chair. If you don't have one leg and it's storage only, well, you don't get rain or snow, that chair's pretty wobbly. So it's conservation, it's recycled water, it's storage and desal where appropriate. So it's, that's the basis of keeping the, you know, balanced supply and I believe CCWD, East Bay Mud and some other Bay Area agencies have done a phenomenal job. There's other agencies in the state right now literally are running out of water and they could be out of water before the rains begin.
Yeah, the city of Colinga seems to be on a very fateful precipice, but you did open the door to tell me how recycled water could work in central Contra Costa.
Sure. That's what we're going to be talking about on October 26th.
Unfortunately, not all of us are making to that.
You know, for years, I did not believe that we should even consider putting recycled water indirectly into our system, whether into the pipes or into a reservoir. My view has changed on that for a couple reasons. One, we're in a severe drought and climate change is going to make it much more difficult in terms of finding supply. Our water comes from snowmelt. And you go up to the Sierras in June now at a high elevation, that snow's gone where 20, 30 years ago, you had a snowpack and it melted gradually so our reservoirs could bring, adapt to that water. It's going to come in gushes. I work with NOAA and Scripps Institute my other life and on atmospheric rivers and we know that we're going to get some very wet years and some dry years, but we don't have, we have not built the system in our state because it's an old system based on everything comes from the Sierras or not everything, but a lot, well, it does, your water does too. That water supply is going to change. Recycled water is a key component to being able to actually diversify a water supply and make it more usable. Right now, golf courses use it and some, you know, along the streets, you can use it. The State Water Resources Control Board is looking at changing the rules on that, potentially in December or January and how and where it can be used. I think it needs to be done. It's done in other states, it's done in other countries. It's perfectly safe to drink. I've drank it before and I didn't pass out, I didn't die, and my hair grew, so it was wonderful.
Yeah, but we didn't tell you about the horns. Oh, sorry.
Well, I shave those every morning.
Other questions? Councilmember Darling.
I'm not going to drive, we would dive deep into the weeds and we don't need to do that to everybody but here, but I do want to recognize both Contra Costa and East Bay Mud, the years that I've worked with both agencies, they went above and beyond where many other agencies put their head in the sand. And between Los Carros and Freeport, those both required tremendous amounts of efforts by those districts to get those projects online and we are reaping the benefit of this. But I do want to also issue a warning to anybody considering getting one of those little flow monitoring things, make sure the report goes to your email, not your husband's, because you will get prompts from somebody who sees a little bit of extra water use. So it's a great tool, but be careful what you do with it.
I gotta get one of those.
Other questions? I'm curious, how many percentage-wise rough numbers would you say of your customers are doing the lawn conversion projects?
We've seen a big uptick because we're now at $2.50 a square foot, but what I've really noticed driving around everywhere is how many lawns are brown. So people have decided not to do that and they say, what should we do? And so if you have a choice, you have a lawn or you have vegetation, irrigate the vegetation and drip and let the lawn die.
That's about right. We're about five-plus percent, if not a little bit more, and growing. So we're looking at also enhancing the rebate program as well to incorporate backyards. So that's one of the things we're studying.
That's great. I just want to thank you both for coming, providing this very valuable information. The, the numbers really are startling when you look at the rainfall amounts this last season compared to that historic drought you talked about in the '70s, and it's much down from, from those years. So I'm glad to hear that our residents and a lot of the people in the area are doing their part already. There's still more work to do and it sounds like some important things on the horizon in terms of recycled water. So thank you again for coming and very valuable information.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation for Arm of Care. And at this time, I would like to invite Amy Lynch, the founder and program director of Arm of Care to the lectern and share more about the mission of her organization.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council Members and citizens. Can I just make sure that's the right one? It's a pleasure to be here. This is Arm of Care's 10-year anniversary, so it feels really important for me to share with you that we are doing something because the need for us to be doing what we're doing is there still. We serve commercially sexually exploited youth. We also serve domestic violence shelters. So the two are highly linked, so this is a timely time for, you know, Domestic Violence Awareness Month for me to be presenting for you today. ARM stands for Art, Recreation and Movement, and we use these modalities as a way of trauma-informed healing for those who have been exploited or at risk for exploitation or have experienced interpersonal violence. And as Laura mentioned, the numbers are so high that, of abuse for both men and women that it's an issue that we want to address and we're, Arm of Care is doing our part for this issue. And Cindy Silva spoke at our first fundraiser 10 years ago, so. Nice. So long ago. I wish we didn't have to do this anymore. I have a, just a statistics up here, which is according to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, that it is really important to provide alternative therapies other than talk therapy for this population. And we do it in the form of drama therapy, music therapy, art therapy, writing, poetry, dance, recreation therapy. We take them out on cultural events. The Save Mount Diablo has taken our girls on hikes, so we expose them and thank you for, to our water guys. Oh, they're gone, but thank you. It's really important. We've done outdoor trips and taken them swimming in the lakes and that sort of thing, so. Art, if anybody in the room is an artist, you know the value of art or if you like looking at art, you understand that it is, it's a, one person's expression saying something would always be nice to know what the artist is saying and having the artist in front of you, but the girls and the women find a way to access parts of their psyche that need healing that they didn't know until you have a blank canvas in front of you. This is a, this is actually a domestic violence shelter. This is one of the places that let us take pictures of their faces. And so we did Christmas stockings with them and then we do Christmas delivery. So we have families in the community that gather, they write their list of the things that they want and then they gather presents for them. So it's one of the greatest things. Last year, we did home deliveries, which was super fun. This is what I said about the art, just a blank canvas. We're at a residential program in Northern California for this particular program. And they don't have a theme. Sometimes they do, but in this particular case, we just said, just whatever you want to paint. And she, this is her heart with wings. This is over Zoom, we work with the foster care youth as well in the county and we spent a lot of time in the last two, three years over Zoom and we did a program with the foster care youth. So there you have a picture of, you can see all the different creativity. And foster care youth are at very high risk for all sorts of violence in the culture. We painted a mural at sports basement in Walnut Creek and our girls went out and we listened to music. You know that Van Gogh song? There's a song about Van Gogh. Well, anyway, the girls had, we had a great time. And they would say, I don't feel like an artist, and we say, everyone's an artist. You just get to do what you get to do and it's, it's beautiful to watch. It's still there if you want to see it. Recreation is, and if you have a hobby, without me going into a lot of details, you understand the value of your own hobby, of why you need that recreation time, why you need that downtime, why you need that space. There's enough studies to show being part of the city that a recreation department in a city can, you know, detour the kids from making other bad choices. So being, having something to do in your free time is super important, something healthy to do in your free time. So this was during COVID. This is actually another domestic woman, a domestic violence shelter. We did bike rides and some of the girls hadn't been on bike rides for a long time. This is actually out in Brentwood. So we ride to a restaurant, we have coffee and they say they never had a $20 salad before, you know, just, they get to experience a lot of freedom. This was up at a residential program where we, they have horses and then we just did a hike and on the hike, we asked them to just observe things that they hadn't noticed before, even though they live there. So we come back and we write about that, just being observant. This is also in Brentwood. They posed in those butterfly, with those butterfly pictures. And then there's movement and if you, it's not just exercise, it's actually learning how to move in a way that feels good to your body, that you enjoy. We know that trauma actually sits in the cellular makeup of the body, in tissue, so we know if we move it, there can be release that happens with it. I have, we have tons of stories of all of these modalities. One in particular that's coming to mind to me right now is a girl was jumped out of a truck. It was actually on the 580 corridor. She jumps out of a truck, she was shot and we were doing movement and she was shot in the leg and we were doing movement and she had a memory of that part of her leg when it was shot and we just sat down and we did movement with the leg, we rubbed her leg. She got to experience, go to the place where she was injured because oftentimes what happens in a place of trauma, you try to ignore the place of trauma. So just reconnecting in a safe way brought her healing, so it's very profound. Here's a residential program that we are just, they wake up in the morning and they bring their towels and we do movement. And the things they say are they just, they were, you know, trauma disconnects the body and the movement that we do reconnects. They feel energized, we dance with scarves because it's safe, right? If I put on music and I have something in my hand and I'm moving something rather than having to do it myself, it's much more enjoyable. Hula hoops. Juvenile Hall has been closed for volunteers when we usually go in for the last few years because of COVID, but we go into Juvenile Hall with our hula hoops and our weights and our Dynabands and balls and it's just been, you know, it was just a blast to be there. And we see so many girls who've even been trafficked, Contra Costa County, Alameda County Juvenile Halls. There's not always enough facilities for them to go, so they're put in Juvenile Hall to be safe. This is, I'm going to show you this one first. So we, this is a combination of art and movement. So here we are, she draws a picture of what she feels like in her body before we do a movement session. And then here's a picture of what she feels like in her body after the movement session, right? You don't have to be an artist or a therapist to figure out that you can go from that to that, yeah, in 45 minutes. This is our postcard activity. It's using images, art images or just images to say how you feel. So if I can't use words, I don't know how to say, I would, I'm not going to use a bad word, but that's what they do sometimes. You know, they don't feel good, they feel disjointed, they feel stuck, they feel darkened, they feel miserable, they feel depressed. They can pull out a postcard to describe it when they don't always have the words to describe it. That's us. You can find us at www-armofcare.org and we are grateful to be able to share with you. We know that we live in an environment where we don't think that there's trafficking. And I have a story of being downtown Walnut Creek, calling the Walnut Creek Police Department. A girl was disheveled, disoriented. She asked for the scrunchie in my hair. I asked if she knew where she was. She thought she was in Concord. She waited for her, either the man buying or selling sex to come out of her, the coffee shop. It was next to the Thai restaurant on Locust Street. I hid behind the building, called the police and I knew what to ask her. Do you have ID? Do you have a phone? Do you know where you are? All of those are signs. And she didn't know the name of the man she was with, who was driving her around downtown Walnut Creek on a Saturday morning at 11 o'clock. So just even being aware that that's happening in our community. So thank you for the opportunity to share with you what's happening. Just like Laura is a voice, I'm a voice until they find their own voices, yeah.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lynch. Any questions, Ms. Lynch? Just on behalf of the entire council and our community, thank you for all the good work that you're doing and all the lives that you're touching and helping through art, recreation and movement.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion?
I'd like to pull item 2C.
Any other items? Does any member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar or discuss an item on the consent calendar? If so, now would be the time to raise your hand if you're on Zoom or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, if you're hearing the audience and would like to address the council on a matter on the consent calendar, please come forward and we can fill out a speaker card at some point. Please come forward and we could fill out a speaker card at some point. Not seeing anyone here in the chamber. Anyone on Zoom? Adam Clark?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the consent calendar absent item 2C?
Move to approve consent calendar items 2A, B, D through G.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Member Haskew?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so let's talk about 2C, adoption of a resolution supporting free and fair elections. Councilmember Wilk?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to pull this because, of course, while we're in election season now and we certainly understand how important it is to be able to have free and fair elections and that we support those in the county without reservation, I did want to acknowledge that Renee Zimer is here, who brought this forward to us at our last meeting, and believe you might have a few words that you'd like to speak prior to us voting on this.
So good evening, Mayor Francois and members of the city council. I'm back. And I just wanted to thank you for recognizing the importance of bringing this resolution forward at this moment in time. As we know, all elections are local. We vote in our neighborhoods. We return our ballots to the ballot boxes at City Hall or send them to the county elections office in Martinez. We all have a role to play in making sure our elections are safe, free, and fair, that all of our votes are counted and that the results are trustworthy and widely accepted. As our, as voters, it is our job to register and check our registrations to make sure all the information is up to date. Just last week, the Elections Division launched a new, more secure and easy to navigate website so that we could do just that. The website is contracostavote.gov. It's also worth taking the time to learn about our county's extensive election safety and security measures. They've done a lot of work to secure their networks, the facilities, processes, and people. It is our job too, as voters, to learn about the candidates, the propositions, and to vote. Our system of government works only when we all accept the rules of engagement. Accountability from our elected officials and the fundamental right of voters to decide the outcome of our elections is something we have largely taken for granted. This resolution allows you, as community leaders and representatives of this wonderful city, an opportunity to publicly commit to upholding the core principles of free and fair elections, the acceptance of election results, and subsequently the peaceful transfer of power. These are fundamental principles that we do not take lightly. They are paramount to the survival of our democracy and the republic. By taking this action tonight, we, the people, can be reassured by the high value that you all place on safeguarding our democratic principles and voting rights. They are precious. And I want to thank you all.
Thank you very much. Would any other member of the public like to address the council on this item, on free and fair elections?
My name is Pete Bennett. I can't remember the name of the blog that I filled out. It's been about six, seven years. I had my nomination papers filled out. I went out and collected my signatures. It was only a two-horse race. And it was summer, I think, 2014. And by the first seven months of that year, I had like eight friends killed. I went and I said, I'm going to go to the elections and I'm going to tell my story. I had my nomination papers. I'm up on the second floor. I'm handing them in and I have two police officers drag me out of City Hall. That same week, my friend's tires were shot out by a sniper in Roseville. Six weeks later, my family was murdered. My friend was burned alive down in Danville. There's somebody you don't know, but he's the nephew of Susan Boyle. He's a friend of mine, a musician. His wife died suddenly. Yeah, I got quite a hell of a story. I tried to run for public office in 2004 when I was on TV talking about outsourcing. And during my public comment, I'm going to show you how Paul Pelosi ties in with that and the Teamsters and the Contra Costa Bar and the multiple attempts on my life that have left my health in pretty bad shape. I know it all. I won't be drinking water at the rate I'm going. I won't be able to evacuate it. I never get any of your health stuff. Nobody ever gives me any services here. You won. You got your, that's your free and fair elections in my book. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any other speakers on free and fair elections? Not seeing any, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Councilmember Wilk?
I'd like to make the motion to approve item 2C, which is adopting the resolution supporting free and fair elections.
And I'll second that.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on now to public communications. This is the portion of the meeting that's reserved for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Consistent with section 9.5 of the City Council handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. So again, we're at the public communications portion of the agenda for items not, for public comment on items not on the agenda. If you're joining us by Zoom, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. If you'd like to provide comments for an item that's not on the agenda, if you're here in, in public, you can come up to the lectern and fill out a yellow speaker card. As a reminder, each speaker has two minutes at this time. I will note that the time is 6:57 and we'll take public comments on items not on the agenda until approximately 7:27. And then, as I said earlier, any other comments beyond 7:27 will come at the end of the, of our agenda this evening. Good evening, Mr. Bennett.
My name is Pete Bennett. I've been a resident of this county for 44 years. I've had clients murdered, friends murdered, customers murdered. I'm an arson victim. I'm a poison victim multiple times, right here in Walnut Creek. It's done to me twice. My food has been taken away. My property was taken right outside here. My cars have been towed away. They've been set on fire. They killed five of my relatives in Utah. My friend was killed in Barcelona. You didn't know that, huh? Friend of Rich Carston. My truck blew up on the freeway 18 years ago with me inside. There's no police report. A couple of months ago, a very famous, well-known person, the husband of Speaker Nancy Pelosi, boy, this was an eye-opener. Nancy Pelosi's husband hired Amanda Bevins, an attorney with the Gagin McCoy. And so much of this, this statement. Amanda Bevins and Bill Gagin, known of both, they're the ones that defended the Narcotics Task Force that almost killed me with the truck explosion, with the poison, with the bacteria, with the hit and runs, with the beatings and the muggings, breaking my bones. Year after year, I've asked for resolution. When my truck exploded on the freeway at death, I was worth at least 1.5 to 2.5 million. Don't know because my trust was stolen. And it turns out that Ronald Pelosi's brother was the Dean Witter Reynolds, JP Morgan executive involved in my losses. And I've been stonewalled by this department and anybody that's had jurisdiction. And you almost beat me to death and it's still nothing. It's really pretty pathetic.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next speaker during public communications. Do we have any other speakers here in the chamber?
Good evening, Major Francois, council members. My name is Bob Joe. I'm Walnut Creek resident and I'm a member of Sustainable Walnut Creek. I'm here on behalf of a number of local sustainable organizations. They're here with me tonight. Jan Warrens with Interfaith Climate Action Network. Nadine Hammers with Climate Reality Project. Margaret is with 350 Contra Costa. And here to thank you so much for supporting Sustainability Week. This is the second year that we've had it. And we, we appreciate all your support and help. This year, as compared to our first year, is a lot larger. We have so much more to offer, starting off with the EcoFest event at Civic Park. It's on Saturday, October 22nd, and there's going to be a lot of events happening there. There's going to be, so I appreciate what you've done by supporting this.
Mr. Joe, I just want to make sure we get the key details out then. So the EcoFest is on Saturday, October 22nd at Civic Park. Starting at what time?
It starts at 11 o'clock, 11 to 3. Yeah.
And then during the week, there'll be other events, not necessarily at Civic Park. How would someone find out more about them? Would they go to your website?
Yeah, so you can go to sustainablewalnutcreek.org and find Sustainability Week there, you know.
Excellent. We'll try to add a link to it on our website as well so that people can find that information easily. Thank you for coming tonight.
And also thank, thank you for all your work on the Sustainability Action Plan. Yeah.
Our pleasure. Thank you for your input on that and all the stakeholder input. It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the council during public communications? Anyone in the chamber first? Not seeing anyone. Anyone on Zoom? Adam Clark?
We do have one hand raised on Zoom.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness and I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996. Today, I want to pass along some positive comments and thank yous. On September 25th, I went to the Walnut Creek Farmers Market downtown and met Cindy Darling. We had a nice discussion. I want to thank her for taking the time to speak to me. Then on October 1st, I participated in a 5K run at Heather Farms and I met Mayor Francois there. We had a nice conversation. Yeah, my husband joined us, so thank you very much for taking the time to talk to us there. Another positive comment is I had heard that the city manager is advocating for enforcement of the municipal codes in Walnut Creek open spaces. Though if this is true, I want to thank the city manager for doing, pushing this concern forward. The latest information I had on this, though, was that the municipal code enforcement has a holdup in the city attorney's office as apparently it's taken quite a bit of time to create the citations that would be given out for infractions of the open space municipal codes. So I wondered if someone can comment, perhaps the city manager, on the status of this issue or if the citizen should just contact the city attorney's office to get a status. And then my last concern was trying to get an answer on the community outreach section of the, I believe it's NCE Environmental Study that began in May 2022 from Public Works. Been told by Public Works that the public outreach will occur within a few months, but the public outreach item is number two on the task list for NCE. And it seems like it should occur before, a few months from now, because it's already, it's way past a few months from May. So I wondered if someone could answer when the public outreach is going to occur on that NCE contract. And I put the descriptions in a email that I sent you. Okay, thank you very much for your time and thanks for all you do for Walnut Creek.
Thank you very much, Ms. Guinness. Any other public comments during public communications?
No additional hands raised.
Okay, go ahead and close, comment during public communications. Any council members have any clarifying questions of staff, comments, concerns? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move on to council member and staff announcements, reports, and requests, starting with closed session announcements. Mr. Mattis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no closed session announcements today.
Thank you. City manager reports, Mr. Buckshai.
Yeah, good evening. I do have two updates this evening. The first is, I would like to share some great news that once again, the city received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. It's otherwise known as GFOA for short. And it's for our annual comprehensive financial report, basically our financial statements for the year that ended on June 30th of 2021. And I'll just read a few excerpts here from, from GFOA. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So this is actually, I believe it's about the 10th or 12th year that we have received this. It's just a testament to the work of, of our council, of our staff, our finance team, and, and all of our city employees who have helped make this happen. So I wanted to acknowledge that, that we just received notice of this this past week. Second update I would like to provide is relative to the A3 program. As, as we're all aware, this is the Behavioral Health Crisis Response Program that the city has been actively participating with, with the county and our 18 other neighboring cities in Contra Costa. I went on a tour about a week and a half ago of 1034 Oak Grove Street, just across the Walnut Creek border into Concord. It's currently, some of you may be aware, it is currently being used as a vaccination site, but it is a county facility that has been used off and on for a while for mental health care. It's in somewhat disrepair, but anyway, the purpose of the tour is this will be one of the new physical locations for several of the programs that are associated with the A3 program. So in addition to having a, a call center, which I'll speak to in just a moment, and crisis teams that will respond in the field, there, part of this program is to also have additional and alternate locations for folks who are experiencing mental health crisis to go to seek some help. So as part of the tour, there are actually, if I can count here correctly, it's either four or five different components. The first being, once this is up and running, the Miles Hall Call Center will be there. It will be a 24/7 operation. It's located somewhere else temporarily as it's operating about 40 hours a week. not 24/7 yet. And the call center not only would be used to dispatch the crisis teams, but also be used as an opportunity to de-escalate a situation and potentially resolve it over the phone. And right now, just saw some numbers, that 70% of the calls that are currently coming into the call center are being de-escalated over the phone, hence resolving the need to send out a crisis response into the field. And then those folks are referred, and there's a follow-up from additional mental health care providers. Some of the mobile crisis response teams would also be housed there. They'll be housed throughout, are located throughout the county. And you'll recall, currently, there are three mobile crisis response teams. When this program is fully scaled up, we will be at 34, and that will be a 24/7 operation. The other components of this new facility is what's called a peer respite care center, which is, would be staffed really by peer support individuals who have been through similar traumatic events. And this is a place where folks can go if they need to get a break out of a difficult situation, and then can be referred into additional care if needed. So also be what's called a recharge center, which is more commonly known as a detox center, where folks can deal with drug addiction issues and get some help. And then there will also be a mental health urgent care center, which is just as it sounds. It, as my understanding, would not be 24 hours, but will be an outpatient urgent care facility. So all this is underway. The county is doing some outreach with some of the neighboring neighbors. There's some residential nearby, other businesses, a school not too far away, to ensure they're well-informed. And then the plan is to get to design phase in construction, and ideally open by early 2024. So it was great to see that in action. And we'll hear a little bit more about this program as we provide the priorities update later. But I wanted to bring this to your attention as a major milestone in looking to bring this facility to the public and have it open. And that's my update this evening, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Who would like to lead off in terms of council members? Excellent. Councilmember Haskew.
And the motivation for me to make this, might be the first, is to thank Dan Buckshy, because when the county decided to take this over, our city manager was one of the moving dedicated people who actually made it possible. And so, Dan, if you don't mind, I am going to personally give you a round of applause, and I hope the rest of the group of people here will do so.
Thank you. I don't embarrass easily, but no, I'm embarrassed, but thank you.
The other thing, I don't have permission to do this. All I can just say is there might be some news emanating from the theater situation. We're waiting in one minute. I can't wait that long. Okay, back to serious business. I attended a CCTA meeting where we discussed projects, funding the projects from A-Bag money to be filled over the county. They have, we have authorized the request for over $57 million, with special emphasis on safe routes to schools. At the theater, I'm going to talk about the Bedford New Program, and it is amazing. It's black artists who have done their work on paper, and it represents a broad spectrum of time and themes, but it's all pretty amazing. On Broadway was last Saturday? It seems like it was months ago. On Broadway was last Saturday. It was fun. It was amazing, and it does a lot of work to help support the arts in our community. And finally, I gave up my thumb for Community Service Day because I volunteered to work at the costume shop, and they handed me a bunch of what will be petticoats for Christmas, the Christmas play. And I stabbed myself no less than 20 times, and there is blood on every third one. So I gave my all for the thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your tremendous devotion and dedication to community service. Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you. Well, first, I wanted to mention that I was at the County Teacher of the Year Awards. This seems like a long time ago. I think it was about three weeks ago. It was at Leshur Center. And we did have a Walnut Creek teacher that was one of the finalists, one of the five finalists, who was Paula Rathard from Merwood Elementary. The winners of the county were actually somebody from San Ramon Valley School District and somebody from the Mount Diablo School District at Mount Diablo High School. So those are the two. And they will actually go to the state final now to be named later, I guess later this year. Was also at the Bedford Gallery opening, with I think a few of us were all there. It was the Harmon and Harriet Kelly Collection of African-American artworks on paper. Very interesting and creative. I certainly recommend everybody to go. It's easy now. You have a leisure ticket for anything. You get to go into the Bedford Gallery free before the show starts. So please make sure you see that. I did participate as a panelist in the Contra Costa Normal Event on Cannabis, which was to help provide education, as well as current regulations and impacts to cities when it comes to cannabis dispensaries. It was informative, educational. It was actually quite an event, once you got outside the panel as well, because there were vendors and flavors of all varieties that were there. Interesting, but certainly good to be on the panel, knowing that this is something that we're talking about over the next year. Also went to DRAA on Broadway. That was, again, a magnificent event. I don't know how much they actually ended up fundraising, but it certainly helps a lot for our arts. Community Service Day, again, thank you to Cindy Silva for founding this and for continuing. It was 15th, 14th, 15th year?
12th.
12th year. I'm getting, in a few years, it'll be the 14th or 15th year. And I participated in the food drive. I was at the Safeway on Ignacio Valley Road. So again, terrific and great to see that involvement. I was at the Rossmore Diversity Festival today, along with Mayor Francois. And that was really something. This is the second year they've had it. And we actually have somebody who is a member of our Diversity Equity and Inclusivity Task Force, Mary Taylor, who is a founder of this. And there were at least two dozen different clubs represented from all sorts, everything from Italian-Americans and Mexican-Americans and different clubs, LGBTQ, you name it. Hundreds of people came, great shows and performances as well. Congratulations to the Rossmore Group for putting this together. And I'd like to see this even grow in the years to come. I want to mention that the High Holidays over the last two weeks in Judaism with Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur is the reason that we're having a special city council meeting tonight, rather than the regular meeting that we would have had last week, because that conflicted with Yom Kippur. And I wasn't sure whether to bring this next issue up, but I think it's important that it's exposed, and not just because I'm Jewish. Last week during the High Holidays, anti-Semitic leaflets were dropped in a neighborhood bordering Walnut Creek in Concord near Oak Grove Road. These are awful vile leaflets that we've seen dropped in other Bay Area communities over the past couple of years. We're seeing that hate crimes are up nationwide. And just this week in Los Angeles, we heard some awful hate speech and racist language by LA council members, no less. I bring this up to expose these hate crimes, and so that we can recognize this overt racism and unite as one community to push back on this. We've made great strides in our city to be inclusive and all-welcoming, and we refute this kind of anti-Semitic and any hate material in every way, shape, and form. There is more work to be done, for sure. But we, as a community, need to expose racism, anti-Semitism, and hate crimes for what they are. So many norms in our society have become polarized. And this is one issue which we must continue to present a united front on opposing and not accept it as free speech and ignore it as one of those things. Silence can equal acquiescence, and I hope others join me in not remaining silent on an issue like this. I'm entering these aboard flyers into the record and ask any residents to please let the city or police department know if you see these come to your door. And I'm sorry to end my report on a bitter note, but I thought this was important.
It is important. Thank you for providing that sobering reminder that this sort of hate and anti-Semitism still exists in our community, and we should call it out and condemn it every opportunity we can. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. I'm sorry you had to go through that at such a special time of the year for your community. It's something that we will not tolerate in the city. Couple things. I went to the Bedford Gallery, which was quite a bit of fun. I popped off after that to the Lindsay Wildoff Museum, where the Chamber of Commerce had their regular bash. And the Lindsay Museum just wanted to express to everybody in the city their appreciation for the renewal of their lease, because that gave them a long enough time period they could really start to do the kind of fundraising and refurbishing that they're looking to do at Lindsay. And they really wanted to just say thank you to everybody in the city for that. The Homeless Task Force, last week, we talked about some ways that, there's a continuing effort to find ways to provide respite care in the hours that Trinity is not open, and we're continuing to work on that. But we're also, the task force is looking at how they can work with affordable housing developers and look through the, you know, help match up the housing element opportunity sites with the developers. So there's some energy going into that. But the biggest thing that I did, the MCE Board has an annual retreat where we go through and we talk about all things electricity and planning and all of that stuff. And it was really interesting. It came right after the heat wave. And so they started off talking about how we made it through the heat wave. And there are some fascinating things that happened. Many of us remember back in the 90s, you know, turn off your air conditioner from 2:00 to 4:00. Well, that was just relying on people voluntarily doing it. MCE has a program where if somebody has an electric vehicle that they charge at their house, they can sign up through an app, and that app will then control when their vehicle charges. And during the heat wave, they got 5 megawatt, million watt-hours of electricity through that, which is enough to provide 300 households with power. So they're using the new technology to try to shift loads, reduce demand, pre-cooling structures, doing a lot of things, but doing it in a way that's trackable and reliable, so that they can actually rely on that in their energy forecasting. We did talk about planning for grid reliability, which is going to be a big thing as we move into electrification. Both the Public Utilities Commission, the investor-owned utilities, and the community choice aggregates like MCE are all working together to look at resource adequacy and make sure that we're planning for that. They also talked about rate forecasting for next year. Electricity rates are continuing to face challenges for a number of different reasons. The drought has reduced the amount of hydropower available, and some of the never-ending supply chain issues are continuing to delay some of the large-scale solar projects. So that's the bad news. The good news is the MCE rates are set, and they're relative to PG&E. And they anticipate right now that PG&E's rates will be higher next year than MCE's rates. And MCE usually has to pay a little increment to PG&E for stranded assets. And that little increment has made MCE get more expensive than PG&E in some years past. They are anticipating that increment will be zero next year, because the PG&E rates are now high enough, there are no stranded assets. And so MCE rates will be lower, are expected to be lower than PG&E rates next year. So that's good news for everybody in the city that is on MCE, including the city's facilities. There's lots more coming with the MCE planning, but things are looking good in the world of community choice aggregates.
That's great. Thank you. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. The, both the mayor and I represent the city on Recycle Smart Board, the Central Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority. And we had two meetings recently. One was to interview candidates for new executive director, and we did make a decision, although the offer has not yet been officialized. At our regular meeting, we did get a first draft glimpse at our rates for 2023-24, which will really start March 1st. And what we can anticipate is that because of the increasing number of regulations related to organic waste reduction and all of those activities, as well as just normal inflationary costs and post-COVID environment, that we will be seeing some rate increases, as we do, but perhaps a little bit more than normal. Representing the city, I attended the September 29th meeting of the Board of Directors of the Golden Rain Foundation. And most significantly at that meeting, they approved their budget for the coming year, which included a small amount of funds that would fund, if we are agreeable, a pilot partnership program between the city and our police department and Rossmore to provide additional traffic enforcement services. This would be similar to the public-private partnership we have, both with John Muir Health and also with Broadway Plaza and Nordstrom. It is not official yet, but they took the first step to put the funding into their budget to be able to come to us and talk about it. The Sustainable Contra Costa held its annual awards gala about two weeks ago, and it was great to see that Rossmore Sustainability Group being honored for their work, particularly in the area of recycling. The, well, I too was at the Bedford Gallery opening, and I don't need to, we don't all need to say we were someplace. So, but it is an interesting show, and there is an opportunity to see it through mid-December. So take the time. And also, public art walking tours will be both this Saturday, the third Saturday of the month, at 10 o'clock. And you can meet in front of the Leshur Center and get a one-hour tour of some of our public art. And it will also occur on the third Saturday of November as well. So there's an opportunity to find out more about our public art. And finally, I will thank the community for your participation in Community Service Day on Saturday, and my council member colleagues, who were at various projects across the city. We had 28 projects, as well as we were collecting food at the grocery stores and in neighborhoods. And we had about 850 participants. So it was a great morning of work in gardens and parks and schools. And thanks to everyone for your help and participation. And Mayor, it is back to you.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone, for all, thank you, colleagues, for all your doing to better our community. I also attended the Recycle Smart Board meeting that Mayor Protem gave a good update on. So moving ahead to the, serve on the Chamber Economic Development Working Group. And we talked about some upcoming studies that the city has commissioned, retail office and medical office. We're eager to get reports on those this month. The Chamber would also like to, offered to host forums to discuss those studies, and then how we might translate the findings of those studies into some action items, including potentially a technical advisory panel that's put on by the ULI that would focus on perhaps a particular industry like office or medical office. I had the pleasure of attending the Break a Sweat for Education event. I did not break a sweat. I only held a microphone. But it was held at Heather Farm Park. It was a fundraiser for Mount Diablo Education Foundation and for Yours Humanly. Both organizations obviously have a mission of improving educational opportunities for people, for students here locally, and then for students and young people across the globe. So it was a pleasure to be there and to welcome them and to wish them well in their event. That evening, I attended the On Broadway Gala hosted by DRAA with all of my colleagues, and it was a pleasure to be there. We had several staff members there as well. And it was a fun evening. It was nice to, I think it was the second time we've been in person. We had a hiatus from, for COVID, but we're back in person, and it was fun. And then on, let's see, last week, as part of this year as mayor, I've tried to do a business visitation program and meet with the owners and operators of businesses, large and small, so that I can understand how they tick, I can take that information back. And hopefully, we, as the council, can make decisions that reflect that information and reflect your business goals and objectives. So accompanying me on that, on a visit to Sewer AI was City Manager Buckshy and Economic Development Specialist Angela Sway. And Sewer AI was a company founded by two local gentlemen, one from Burlingame, one from Walnut Creek. And they have developed a software that takes the manual process of inspecting sewer pipes out of a manual process and puts it into a computer. And so the camera still does the work of running through the line and collects all that data. And then that video feed goes, they have the software where the video feed goes back to them, and it can detect with a high level of precision where there are some inadequacies. or deficiencies in a pipe that need to be corrected. So, right here in Walnut Creek, in the Shadelands, and we're really proud to have them here. And it was an interesting and informative meeting. That, I think it was that evening, or it could have been the next evening, I attended the mayor's conference. We're still on Zoom, and, but we'll be going. The mayor's conference is made up of all mayors of the 19 cities of Contra Costa County. Tom Butt, the mayor of Richmond, is the chair this year, although he wasn't there. So it was Rob Schroeder, all right, Martinez, served as chair. And we had an update from, on solid waste and recycling, which was information that was not entirely new to Mayor Protem Silva and I, because we serve on Recycle Smart, but it was good for the rest of the group to get that information and for the public to get that information about SB 1383, kind of a transformative law that Governor Brown signed in 2016, that is really just starting to be implemented this year, which means that all of our edible food waste, and, not edible food waste, but food waste, goes into the green can. If it's edible, we're trying to get it into the food banks or to folks like White Pony Express. So that, that's trying to put the, put the banana peels, the orange peels, anything that's of organic waste into the green can, not into the black can. I did attend Community Service Day. I was out at Heather Farm Park at a real hidden gem in the park called Centennial Grove, which is on the other side of the pond from the community center. And it was founded in 2014, and it has, it's comprised of 100 trees representing the various different communities, the various different nations of people that founded Walnut Creek. So Asia, Europe, Africa, all reflected in this beautiful grove. And I was out there with about 50 or 60 of my new best friends, and they all, most of them were swimmers for the Aquanuts who came to work, and they brought their music, and we spread a lot of bark out along the grove, and it looked really nice as a result. So that was a successful day. And then after that, I went to the Safeway on Bancroft and got a few bags of groceries for the food bank. Then I did attend the Diversity Festival in Rossmore today, and I was really impressed, as you were, and hope that we can use that as a model for a future diversity fair here in Civic Park. And that is my report.
Actually, Mayor, I have a quick question on the Recycle Smart.
Yeah.
So with those, that food waste that would go then into the green bin, should that be put in by itself without a container, plastic bag, paper bag, whatever, just on its own?
That's a great question, yes. Please do not put any sort of other contaminated waste, like plastic, in the green. You can either put the item itself directly in, the banana peel, or what we do at our house is we have an organic compostable bag that you put in your compost bin, sits in your kitchen, then you can put that whole bag in the, in the green can.
Or you can wrap it in newspaper, so anything that's paper.
In newspaper, right.
The pizza box goes in there too, because it's been soiled, it's contaminated, paper plates.
Oh, so that would go into the green bin?
Yes, paper plates.
Okay.
If it's not coated, like plastic coated.
Okay. This is good information to know, because I've heard some horror stories of people that are just throwing food waste into the green bin and then have to wash out the ants and the worms afterwards. So I like the compost idea.
So maybe we better tell you what's about to happen under state law. We actually are required to begin inspecting randomly the green, blue, and black bins to ensure that we are properly sorting at the local level. And if we do it well, we're going to get a kudos little sticker on our bin. But, or we might get a fix-it, it's called an oops report. I told my husband, if we get an oops report, it's not going to be, there's going to be something to pay. But that is about to happen, because that's under state law, we have to do that once or, once a year and report to the state that we are actually doing that in order to be able to train at the, at the local level, at the street level, to change behavior.
Sounds like we have our next nutshell article ready to, to go on that one.
Well, I wanted to point out too, that there, there's a good, you should have received information in the mail from Recycle Smart, which has a very kind of picture-friendly, what goes in the black can, what goes in the blue can, what goes in the green can. If you misplaced that flyer for some reason, go to the Recycle Smart website. It's all there, and hopefully, it's all explainable. And if not, the staff is extremely friendly and receptive. Please give them a call, and they'll be happy to explain any questions you might have.
I see a TV game show in Walnut Creek Television's future.
Which bin does it go in?
I like it. Okay, well, we'll, we're moving on then from council member reports. Now that we're talking about game shows, to city council priority updates. That's next on the agenda, and at this time, I would invite Deputy City Manager Carla Hanson.
Actually, I'm going to introduce this item before Carla jumps in. I just want to highlight that this is the last of the updates for this set of priorities that were set by your council in March of 2021. We've been updating quarterly, and the rationale for that is it will be time to set new priorities or reconfirm existing priorities, most likely on February 28th of 2023. The city council calendar for 2023 will be coming to your council next week. We anticipate that retreat will occur then. So this is our final report and update on the body of work that's been done for the better part of two years. And this will also be used to help inform your council to make decisions about which priorities to set for the next two-year cycle, as obviously, we are not done with these. There are, there's a lot of work still to be done in many cases. So with that, Carla, please take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. I'm Carla Hanson, Deputy City Manager. So March 2021, you all set these five priorities. And since then, we've been updating you regularly, quarterly, on the work plans and the progress and the accomplishments that we've had under these five priorities. As the city manager mentioned, this will be the last update, but that doesn't mean that these, the work is done on these five priorities. You'll hear me talk about what we've accomplished since the last update, and then what work is still to come in the next calendar year, and what work will continue beyond. Just because the, these are priorities that are not something that can just be achieved in, in two years. These are ongoing things that take considerable action going forward. So as we've done in the past, I will give you an update on what we've done since the last update, and then pause for questions on each priority. So we'll start with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this priority focuses on really building a welcoming and inclusive community through our community-based DEI Task Force, citywide training, and our internal working group. So on the community-based DEI Task Force, Mayor Francois and Councilmember Wilk lead the task force with 13 other community members. They've developed a mission and vision, and they completed a community survey in August. The results of that survey will be analyzed by the consultant and shared with the task force in the coming months. And the task force will be developing recommendations for the council on how to build it, build and continue building an inclusive community. The task force members have also identified a number of several initiatives that can be accomplished while progress is being made on those recommendations. And those updates will be shared with the community and the council going forward. In the training area, as of August 2022, DEI training has been completed for all city staff, for the city council, and all of our council, our commissions. The feedback on the, the trainings was really positive, and we're looking to how we can incorporate this training on an ongoing basis for our city staff. The internal DEI working group is called Rising Tide, and it was established in June 2021, and it's 12 staff members from around our organization. From January through May, our consultants circle up, provided coaching and training and consultation sessions with the group, and the group is now focused on three areas. Internal policies, external policies, and communication and culture. And they're going to be working, doing, creating work plans around these areas and reporting back on their work. And that is it for diversity, equity, inclusion, and I will entertain any questions you have.
Council, any questions on DEI? Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. The task force, what is the timeframe for the recommendations to come to council?
I, I can probably speak to that, because I'm.
Six months?
We're talking within six months.
Thank you. And I did forget to mention, although I am the sole presenter, I do have a team of subject matter experts here to help me answer questions. Thank you.
I think we're good to move on, thank you.
The next priority is economic development and COVID recovery. And this priority really has four components. General economic development, downtown support and management, development services streamlining, and then short-term rentals and cannabis regulation. So I'll walk through each one separately. Under general economic development, the mayor mentioned this in his update. The Economic Development Division is working with industry consultants on a retail strategy and office property and medical office study. And those studies are set to be published next month in 2022, November 2022. The Economic Development Dashboard has been in the works over the last couple of months and will be launched next month as well. And the business retention program that was started really to open the lines of communication among our major employers, and it includes visits from the mayor, the city manager, and our economic development team on a month-to-month basis. That program is underway and is ongoing. Around downtown support and management, our economic development team, Community Development Department and Public Works continue to oversee the rebound program, which was extended through June 2023 to really accommodate phasing necessary to support businesses as the water mains are replaced on Locust and Bonanza, coming this, later this month, this year, next year. A comprehensive outdoor dining policy was adopted by council in June 2022, and that replaces existing policies that were all very different, and so it's under one umbrella, one policy. And the goal really is to have one streamlined application that allows businesses to apply once for various ways to have outdoor dining downtown. And the first phase of implementation under the outdoor dining policy, which includes the permanent outdoor structures, will begin, will focus on Main Street and begin in early 2023. Our Community Development Department continues to focus on customer service and understanding our customers' experience when they're accessing our services. They, the departments, with the help of our digital services manager, has been gathering input on our digital permitting that we were forced to figure out because of the pandemic. And the input received from surveys earlier this year has really helped the department relook at their city webpages and figure out what is the information that our customers really need to know, including what is the process, what is a complete application, and how do we do it online? And so that work continues. A virtual permit hub was launched in April 22, and over the summer, additional website improvements, including how the design review process works, was published online. And the Planning Division is also developing an updated design review standard and guidelines document. This effort will incorporate objective design standards and updated design review process manual. These guidelines were reviewed by the Design Review Commission in May, and staff expects to bring those guidelines for council to review in summer 2023. Moving on to short-term rentals and cannabis regulations, the city is now contracting with a consultant to facilitate collection of transit occupancy tax. And staff will report back on city, to the city council in spring 2023 on potential short-term rental zoning regulation changes. On the cannabis side, the council adopted an updated ordinance authorizing adult-use commercial cannabis deliveries, delivery businesses in the city, and a new adopted ordinance for, or sorry, resolution for new operator selection. And later this evening, the council will be considering sustainability and community benefit policy relating to the outdoor, adult-use delivery operations. Following that, the city will be issuing an RFP to, to select two additional operators, and that should be coming in winter 2022. And I will pause there.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Hanson, Councilmember Darling?
Thank you, and thanks for running through all this. With the extension of time on the structures downtown, there are a couple of structures that don't appear to be getting used on a regular basis. When do we anticipate those halting operations? Or do we, are we waiting until we get the full process together?
I'm going to direct that question to our Economic Development Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, Collette Hannah, Economic Development Manager. So we are monitoring those on a regular basis with our code enforcement officer. And so it's, it's kind of unique in that some of them are not used at different times, and then on the weekend, we see a lot of activity. So we monitor those on a regular basis, but towards the end of the year, as we start launching the permanent program, that's when we will be going in and actively enforcing removal of those spaces that are not being used on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. And then, this is probably going to be you too, so.
Okay.
On the dashboard, what kind of indicators do you guys anticipate being tracked on the dashboard?
So it's, it's pretty wide and broad in terms of the things that we're looking at. So we're looking at standard things like unemployment, income, income per capita, overall income, standard things like population, that kind of thing. But we're also kind of creating a profile of different aspects of the community. So looking at shopper characteristics, psychographic data, that kind of thing. We're looking at a business profile, what kind of businesses are here, our top industries, what kind of sales tax are we generating from a retail standpoint, real estate trends, office vacancies, retail vacancies, those kinds of things. So it creates an overall picture based on data from multiple different aspects, from industries, as well as just the community as a whole.
So if somebody comes in and is interested in one particular aspect of it, they can drill down into that part of the dashboard?
Right, that's what we're trying to collect is, is different aspects of data that will help paint that picture.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Don't go anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much. On the outdoor dining, the permanent program, I know we talked about the fees. Were those finalized? And the reason I ask the question is because I've heard some scuttlebutt in the business community that they didn't think they were finalized. And so now I'm properly confused.
So some of those you did adopt earlier around the pods, as well as those in private, outdoor dining and private parking lots. There are other fees that have not been adopted yet that we'll be bringing back to council in December.
I think there was some discussion that we want to ensure that our fee structure appropriately encourages people to do it so that we don't minimize the number who are participating. Otherwise, it won't be a very vibrant outdoor dining experience.
Yes, most definitely. And that's, that's what we'll be discussing in December.
Second, the studies on retail, office, medical office. When will we be seeing the results of those studies, do we think?
Yeah, well, you'll actually be seeing them later on this month. So we are finalizing those, and we'll be, we have meetings scheduled to review them in detail with each of you.
So we're going to have robust conversation, not just independently, but also at a council meeting?
Well, that's to be determined. After we have those meetings with you, then we'll look for your direction on how you want to kind of further launch those. We definitely do have a plan in place for launching those to the public, for having these kinds of forums, bringing in the brokerage community, the developer community from both retail office and medical, to have further discussions, to talk about what kind of plan we'll be putting into place to implement basically the strategies that are recommended throughout the studies. But that'll be after we have those initial conversations with each of you as council members.
Okay. And on the development services, the Blueprint for Success, I know that that's not you.
That one is not me.
That's over there. I really just wanted to ensure that it's one of the, it's very customer-facing. We hear about it a lot, but we don't ever see what we actually, they're experiencing. If there is a way to do some kind of show and tell for us so that we as a council understand what the customer is experiencing, that would be very helpful. It's just kind of one of those gaps on our learning curve as a result of, that we don't approve it. It is operational. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions on economic development and COVID recovery? Nope, I think we're good.
Moving on to environment. Moving on to environmental sustainability and climate action. So the focus of this priority is really updating our sustainability action plan, and it is happening in three phases. We are currently in Phase Two. In August, the city council held a study session to really look at 21 strategies that can get us to 2030 and 2050 greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. It was a lot of information. We will be coming back to you in November to really dig into those strategies that are really going to move the needle towards 2030 goals. And since August, a new state law passed, AB 1279, am I getting that right? Yes, which establishes a new legally binding goal for 2045. Previously, we were looking at 2050 to reduce our emissions to 80% below 1990 levels. The new law says we need to reduce our emissions to 85% below 1990 levels by 2045. So 5% more in five less years. So as we are looking at this new law and looking at those strategies that you all looked at in August, we're kind of reevaluating, how much more do we need to do to get to 2045? So that analysis is still occurring, and we're going to be bringing some of it to you in November to give you a look at what is it going to take to get us to 2045 and meet those state laws, goals. And after that, depending on direction from the council, we will potentially move into Phase Three, which really includes drafting the Sustainability Action Plan, doing environmental review, and then adopting the plan. And we're hoping to do that by spring 2023. With that, I will pause for questions.
This one's at the top of the head, and I'll lose it if I don't ask it. So in 2020, we had achieved the goal of 20% below 1990 levels. We got to 25%, right, below?
Correct.
And the new state law says then by 2045, we have to go from 25% basically to 85% below 1990 levels.
Correct.
How will we do that?
That's a good question. And we have 21 strategies that could get us there, focusing on six that can really move the needle. But we do have to be more aggressive than we thought we were going to need to be when we started this work back in 2021 and started all of that analysis. So as we continue to look at those, we're going to bring to you, here are some options that can get us there. What do you think? And that's going to really build the bulk of the Sustainability Action Plan, is those strategies that can get us there.
And those will all be quantified, and we'll be able to see that they add up to 85% or more?
Correct. The goal is to show you in November where we were in 2020 and what that new gap is from 2050 to 2045, and how much further we need to go.
Great. Any other questions? Councilmember Darling?
Thank you. I love how the things move around on this.
Me too.
Thinking about what we're looking at in November, is there any of the different measures that are being considered that we can begin earlier implementation that don't require the full SEQA document, or we could be saying we're doing them under our existing Climate Action Plan or something like that? I'm just worried that if we're waiting all the way till mid-2023 to start doing things because we need to be more aggressive, we're going to end up behind. We're going to go faster to get behind her.
It really is a linear type of analysis. So we know that we can meet 2030 goals, and then really it's the ramp-up of the things that we're going to start to do in the next few years to get to 2030, ramping up those strategies a little bit more to get to 2045. So we can start earlier, but we're still going to have to do a little bit more as we go through the years.
Okay. So the analytical process will continue to make sure that we're going to meet the goal, but if there were things that we could be doing sooner rather than later because we know that we'd be doing them no matter what?
Correct.
Look at that. Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions on sustainability and climate action? Nope. All set.
So the next priority is infrastructure and facilities, and this initiative is really around your parksure future, and this began in 2018 and was designed as a two-phase project. The first phase being looking at recommendations for future arts and recreation programming and the facility needs to house those programs in four of our critical facilities, so Heather Farm Park Community Center, Clark Swim Center, Civic Park Community Center, and Shadland Arts Center. And Phase One concluded in February 2020 with direction from the council to really focus on Heather Farm Community Center and the Clark Swim Center. And then we began really the implementation phase of Phase One, which is supporting the replacement of the Heather Farms Center and the Swim Center in a combined facility at Heather Farm Park. And Phase Two of this project was put on hold as we work through Phase One implementation. So in July 2021, the council confirmed the project study area for the replacement of the aging facility. And then that same year, in December, you all selected a site for the existing community center for the future facilities. And then since then, staff's been doing a lot of community outreach on the conceptual design and the site design, which was completed this summer, and was also brought forward to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Pros Commission for their feedback. And that will be coming to council this fall for your further direction. In October of 2021, our city manager presented three financing options to pay for the replacement of those facilities that you identified. And you all directed us to focus community survey on understanding the community's priorities and viability of a potential sales tax measure. So that survey was completed in January, and results were presented in February 22. And then since March, you all and city staff have been doing lots of community outreach to really understand what are the community's needs and to share information about what are those needs that we know we're going to have in the future as a city. You all talked to over 50 community groups and over 500 residents. And through a mail survey and a online survey, we were able to get feedback from 4,800 residents. And with that feedback, the council decided to place a sales tax measure on the ballot, a 10-year half-cent sales tax measure, which we now call Measure O, on the ballot for November 8th, 2022. And subsequently, in September, you all endorsed that measure as you adopted a resolution to endorse the measure and support it. And I will pause there.
Questions on infrastructure? Nope. I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. Social wellness and public safety. This priority integrates existing programs and adds new programs that are provided by multiple departments in the city. They're really centered around mental health crisis and response training, continuing to address our homelessness issue, and enhancing community engagement. We heard an update from the city manager earlier this evening on the A3 program, and this program continues to grow. And the main focus of it, as we heard this evening, was the Miles Hall Crisis Call Center, which is currently open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM, with the goal of being open 24/7 with 10-minute response times by the end of 2023. Our Walnut Creek Police Chief has been asked to help the working group stand up the new call center location and assist in the development of a countywide protocol that will assist all public safety in answering these calls and directing answering points for those calls. I think one of the notable challenges at this point is the labor shortage in mental health and clinicians and technicians throughout the county and really throughout our labor force. So the county is continuing to try to staff up these operations, but it will depend on... The risk here is the potential lack of employees to hire in its expansion. Other items under the mental health crisis response include our police department training and regional crisis intervention team. So the police department has completed trainings on crisis intervention, simulator training, de-escalation training, and principled policing, all focused on mental health, and has began to integrate de-escalation training into firearms training, arrest and control training, and non-lethal equipment trainings as well. Since January, our police department, along with the Martinez and Pleasant Hill Police Department, established a regional crisis intervention team to improve each agency's ability to respond to mental health crises. The Walnut Creek Police Department is contributing four officers to this program, including our two homeless outreach program HOP officers. As of August 2022, all of the team members have been trained and attended the crisis intervention team training. And the police department just added a sergeant to this team and has plans to add two to four officers in the future. The city continues to address the homelessness issue. The council approved funding for a full-time designated core team in the fiscal year '22 and '23 budgets. Our core team meets monthly with our PD and other city staff to discuss and address emerging issues and operational issues. And a representative from this core team also attends the monthly regional housing, excuse me, homeless task force meetings. The HOP team was reestablished in July 2021, and two of our police department officers support this team. And combating homelessness requires a cross-departmental effort and collaboration between not only our police department, but our Public Works, Community Development, and Arts and Recreation Departments. And representatives from these departments formed a team to develop principles, catalog existing programs, and identify service gaps. This team meets regularly and is developing a training program for all city staff who have regular contact with our homeless population to ensure safety of our community members, our employees, and to improve understanding of how to serve our unhoused population throughout the community. And the sergeant of the HOP team will be providing that training to that group this fall. In response to the November 2021 organized retail theft at Nordstrom's, the police department increased its presence downtown, including overtime shifts, partnering with our sheriff's department for additional resources. And the council authorized funds to increase overtime, hire more officers, and security cameras and equipment to help deter future organized retail theft in downtown. And officers have provided over 2,000 downtown patrol overtime hours in 2022 and provide a highly visible presence and interact with community members and conduct enforcement activities. The department formed a social media team to better connect with our public on social media. This team meets quarterly for training and discussing ways to enhance community engagement. Since 2022, the department has gained over 900 followers on Facebook and over 1,100 followers on Instagram. The department also formed a continuous improvement team last July, and through this team, they were tasked with evaluating the current deployment model to serve the community more efficiently. A new patrol model began in January 22 based on this work, which increases a flexibility and deployment of officers to best meet the needs of the community. And one last kudos for our police department. They released their first annual report in three years in June. And I will pause there.
Any questions? Yes. Councilmember Darling?
Thank you, and thanks to everybody that's been working on this priority. There have been questions about whether or not traffic enforcement downtown requires additional resources after, like, the recent death of the pedestrian on California. Is that something that the deployment model is looking at?
I'll have Captain Andy Brown come and answer that question.
Brown, come on down.
Evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and members of the community. Andy Brown, the police captain here at Walnut Creek PD. And your question was about traffic enforcement in the downtown area and whether members of the downtown patrol team that we hope to stand up in the future will help with that. Absolutely. And we also have officers currently working overtime, and one of their main tasks is to conduct traffic enforcement in the downtown area. So that is a focus for those officers, as well as the normal patrol officers that are out there responding to calls for service.
Okay. So the extra hours that are going into downtown do include the traffic enforcement
Yes, they do.
Coming in and out. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
So often in the past, traffic enforcement has been on motorcycles. Is that what we're looking at in the downtown, or are we looking at traffic enforcement in vehicles instead?
Both.
Not on a bike?
We have e-bikes. We have four e-bikes. But yes, it's a combination of motorcycle officers. We just promoted one of our motorcycle officers to sergeant. So that leaves us with one motorcycle officer on patrol, along with his sergeant, so two. But we just did a process to identify additional officers to become motor-certified, and we've identified two for that role. But that doesn't mean an officer in a vehicle can't do that same job. And so if, in the meantime, waiting for them to get trained up on the motorcycle, which does take some time, they can still conduct enforcement activities in the vehicle.
I have another question, and I was wondering about it. Just things I'm seeing on the street, somebody in the right-hand lane making a left turn in front of two lanes of traffic. It seems like things are crazier than they were before COVID. Is it just me?
Well, COVID was a rare time in traffic in Walnut Creek where it was, there just wasn't a lot of it. Yeah. And so, yeah, by comparison to what you're used to, maybe that's the change that you're identifying. But, you know, we're out there. I think crashes are similar in terms of, you know, pre-COVID numbers. I don't have the exact numbers, but like, anecdotally, I think it's pretty similar to prior years prior to COVID.
So the behavior hasn't changed. It just, we saw nothing for a while, and now we're back to seeing what people, the crazy things that people were doing and causing problems.
I think that's part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Captain Brown or staff on public safety and social wellness? Nope. I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to the work completed on the five priorities you all have identified, we are working on the housing and safety element update for our city's general plan. The housing element covers 2023 to 2031, housing needs at all income levels, and our safety element plans for natural and human-caused hazards to reduce risk. You all reviewed the housing element in September 2022, and we expect to bring the safety element for review in early 2023. So next steps, as the city manager mentioned, this is the final update for the calendar years 2021 to 2022 priorities, and you all will be meeting in early 2023 to identify new priorities for '23 and '24. With that, the recommended action for you this evening is to receive the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead now. I think we've asked a lot of questions already, so we'll go ahead and open up the public comment on the priorities. Any member of the public that would like to address the council on this, you'll have two minutes. If you're here in the chamber, we'd ask that you please fill out a speaker card, and we'll hear from you first. If you're joining us by Zoom and would like to address the council on the priorities, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. And a reminder that each speaker will have two minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Jan Warren, longtime resident in the Woodlands. Addressing the specific area around the homeless and the... The core team, you know, you got this internal team. this, the core team, you know, you got this internal team. About a year ago, I came and was all enthusiastic, we were meeting with the homeless task force, and we were gonna work on getting the, the, our homeless residents to participate in the trash bag pickup in their commu, where they live, and they were gonna get some financial reward. And we were lacking staff, and we had all sorts of problems by, back then, a year ago, and I was asked to be patient. And it seems to be something I'm often asked to be, is patient. And so, I, I have this in writing now, that this committee's meeting about once a month, and who's on it, and so forth, what I, the piece I'm missing is the process. I go to the homeless task force meetings, this group's over here, and you have these different people from the different committees, and I don't know how to proceed to get this back on the agenda, to get something done. I know that Rich said something last year about, well, they made a list, and it wasn't that high on the list, but, I mean, there's not a whole lot of, I'll say transparency or communication about how this process is supposed to work, other than just the police department, the internal, it's confusing to me, and a little discouraging some, somewhat. The other comment, I'm, I'm a little bit shocked, is the two thousand overtime hours, and I wonder when we might have a, an update on the status of positions. I know we put some extra money out there to train and get people into the school and so forth. Where are we on staffing on the police and our regular staff? How full are we? I know we're still missing a housing manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Any other members here in the audience would like to address the public, or address the council on priorities? Not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and turn to Zoom.
We have one hand raised on Zoom, Barbara Guinness.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness, and I just wanted to comment on priority number three, environmental sustainability and climate action. I see a lot of those twenty-one different action items, or whatever they're called, strategies, I guess. It seems like most of them have to do with gas emissions, and electrification, and those types of things. In the statement that was made initially on environmental sustainability and climate action plan, it talked about programs such as alternative transportation, open space protection, and disaster resiliency. Did we just kind of run out of time? Or, or are those things that are gonna be carried over in the twenty-three, twenty-four? Because I really don't see any of these twenty-one strategies for open space protection or disaster resiliency. Like I said, I see a lot of them on electrification emissions and those type of things. They're important too, but so is the open space. You saw from the survey that you did, that came up number two, people really love the parks and the open space, so that is important. And the last time I attended a meeting on that, seems like people talked about planting trees and things like that. I don't see things like that in there, I know planting tree is very simple, you know, statement, but something on that order is what I meant. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guinness. Any other speakers on Zoom?
No additional speakers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period then, and maybe just some follow-up questions, if we can. I think on the last comment made by Ms. Warren, if I have this correctly, obviously, open space protection and disaster resiliency is still very important, but if I have a, that goes more to the sustainability part of the plan than the climate action, reduce the emissions part, is that right?
That's correct. The plan is meant to be both a climate action and sustainability, resiliency type of plan, because as we are working toward reducing our emissions, climate change and the effects of climate change are still affecting our community and the world. So we're planning for both. How do we, how do we reduce as much as we can to help prevent future climate action or climate events and climate, the weather changing, and, and all the things that we're experiencing now, and also make our city resilient as we go forward? And so there, both of those components are in the plan. There is no state law saying you must be resilient to this level, however, there is state law saying you must meet these goals by twenty-thirty and now twenty-forty-five.
So the plan will definitely include open space protection and disaster resiliency?
Disaster resiliency, certainly, yes.
And the state goals are related to our greenhouse gas emissions and the reduction levels that we have to achieve, so those are the ones that we've, the twenty-one strategies are targeted, our state mandates at this point. But the program itself and the whole plan is coming to us when? Or the next draft?
The next draft, so really focusing on what are those strategies around climate action will be coming to you in November, and depending on your direction then, we'll probably be coming back to you to look at all twenty-one strategies again, which again include resiliency strategies as part of those twenty-one, to get your direction on, are these the strategies you want in the plan going forward? If you, if that's agreeable, then the plan will be drafted and we'll start doing environmental review. So that's expected to be next spring, twenty-twenty-three. Okay, thank you.
And then in terms of Ms. Warren's questions about the police staffing, maybe the city manager can respond to those.
Yeah, let me speak to just staffing overall. In fact, just received an update on this, it's something that we track very regularly. Our vacancy rate overall is at fourteen and a half percent citywide, which is actually down from a high of seventeen, but it's still double our standard rate of about seven to eight percent. So it's a fair number of positions, you know, at roughly fifteen percent, that's off the top of my head, that's in the neighborhood of about fifty-five positions that are vacant, so that's a lot of lost capacity, as you can imagine. Relative to PD, actually, the numbers are, are better than that. The base level vacancy rate for sworn officers is nine percent, but if you factor in the number of officers that are in background, which actually takes a while, the effective rate is closer to five percent. So we've made tremendous strides and a very concerted effort to make those strides over the past several months in order to get those positions filled. So we're hopeful that those individuals make it through the whole, the extensive background process, and will be on the street before too long, hence the reason we still have some increased overtime that your council authorized in December of twenty-twenty-one, and, and carried forward until we can get those positions filled. You know, in terms of the housing manager, as Ms. Warren asked about, pleased to state that we're hoping that we have somebody starting in about mid-November. So we're going through the background and final process there, but it's taken some time to get through the interview process and find candidates. And then in relation to the internal homeless program, so there's a lot of different pieces here, obviously, we have the community, the home, community-based aspect of homeless with the community task force. We obviously do a lot of work with the Trinity Center, we have our HOP program, the core program, and that there's a lot of coordination. What was also put into play, starting about a year ago, was an effort to train more of our other staff who may be interacting with homeless. By way of example, as we know, there are, are at times a fair number of homeless in Civic Park, we have many city programs there, including preschools, in which there have been some interactions that have created some challenges. So training folks to deal with folks who may have some mental health issues, so that staff are equipped to do that for potentially their safety and others. But beyond that, really to coordinate between our different departments, if we're seeing some shifts in homelessness, so that we can orient our programs accordingly. So the next step of that was to do greater coordination with the homeless task force. Some of that was put on hold due to the, frankly, due to the vacancies that I just noted, one in particular being the housing manager, who really was the point person for our homeless activities that are not PD-related and not directly related to the core outreach program. So some of that was tabled until we can get some of these positions filled, but we're hopeful to get those back up and running and have an increased level of coordination going forward.
So just to clarify, we are still at an average across all departments of fifteen percent vacancy. If the police department, which represents a very large percentage of our staff, is between nine percent and, and getting lower, that means we have some areas of our city staff that are in the twenty-five percent range of vacancy?
Probably not quite that high, but certainly higher than fourteen, yes.
Got to act, to get to the average, you gotta have, and some are below, you gotta have some that are above, okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Just one, there was, the chart that was attached to staff report was very helpful, and it showed remarkable progress on a lot of different things, so thank you to you, and all of you, and everybody else for making that progress. The ones that are like sixty percent, or ten percent, or because of staffing or other issues, this is our last report on these priorities, what happens with those task items?
So as we look forward to your priority setting in twenty-twenty-three, we're gonna be bringing forward a, this information to show you, here's all the work that still needs to be done, to help inform your priority setting for the next two years. As I mentioned, this is, a lot of this is ongoing work, a lot of these plans and policies that you all are setting now have to be implemented, and so that's, that's work that will be ongoing. So it'll be up for your consideration on, as you set new priorities.
Okay, then, any final comments, requests?
I, I just want to note that with the staff shortage, and every, and everybody's still trying to do all of the crises that come up now, this is an amazing report in terms of how the staff has worked so hard to accomplish so much. And there's clearly staff here, but I ask this staff to take back to all of the rest of the staff that we truly, truly appreciate it. And I, I, as far as I'm concerned, we should declare it from the rooftops, so everybody in the city should know the value of the strength of our staff. I am very proud of, of all of you, and all of you that aren't even here right now. And I believe I am speaking for the entire council.
Well, I was going to say, I, I was not going to say the same thing, but something similar, which is thank you to all of you, and our community is truly fortunate to have the hard work of our staff. And I really commend my council colleagues for keeping it just to five and staying focused, because we cannot be all, all things to all people.
And do we want to move to accept this report?
Yes, we do.
And thank our staff for that? So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Welk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hanson, thank you, staff. How are you, how's everybody doing? Short break, we're gonna take a five-minute break, be back at eight-thirty. We're going to take a five-minute break, be back at 8:30. All right, we're back. Next on the agendas and consideration item titled, Consideration of a Resolution Approving a Sustain, Approving Sustainability Measures and Community Benefits Criteria Policy Related to Selection Procedures for Non-Storefront Cannabis Delivery Only Operator Permits. At this time, I would invite staff to make the presentation.
This was last discussed at the September 6th meeting. And, come on, let's, there, there. Okay. Technology, got to love it. Back in September, we brought the draft policy for sustainability and community benefits. Council had concurred with the sustainability element recommendations, but expressed concern about the proposed minimum value of community benefits element as being potentially burdensome. Council directed staff to revise the policy to reduce the potential burden by eliminating the minimum combined value for community benefits. The community benefits element presented on September 6th, '22, included a minimum combined value of $250,000 for all proposed community benefits elements for a proposal. This figure was developed based on research by staff plus experience from HDL in managing city cannabis licensing throughout California. Delivery-only services generate much lower revenue than storefront retail, and there are unfortunately few examples of community benefits that do not include a storefront retail component in the jurisdiction they're in. So, there was not a lot of information to go off of. Staff has revised the proposed policy to remove the proposed minimum community benefits value. Staff has noted the preference for Walnut Creek-based and/or focused programs and activities in the community benefits criteria. And if approved, the revised policy will be applied to Urban Joy as they move forward to add adult-use cannabis to their operator conditional use permits. Two other operators will then be selected as part of a future RFP process that was approved back in April with the revised selection procedures. The selection process that was approved in April, the city will issue a request for proposal for the two available cannabis operator slots. The RFP will identify the criteria that proposals will be ranked against and a timeframe in which the proposals can be accepted. The selection criteria include quality of the application for 30 points, experiencing qualifications for 30 points, sustainability measures for 20 points, and community benefits plan for 20 points. And in the sustainability measures, the proposals must include at least one of the identified measures, which include EV or hybrid delivery fleet, EV charging stations, stocking organic pesticide-free and/or locally sourced cannabis products, products that use certified sustainable manufacturing and processing, the business is certified or qualifies for green business certification, or other measures and practices as determined by the city manager to be acceptable in meeting the goal of this element. For community benefits, again, proposals must include at least one of the identified elements: an annual payment to the city of percentage of gross revenue, one-time upfront lump-sum payment to the city to fund either city-identified projects and facilities, or to be deposited in the general fund, an annual fixed payment to the general fund, annual payment to a local city-identified nonprofit that provides drug addiction abuse services, youth services and support, and/or services and support for unhoused persons. Or other measures or practices, again, determined by the city manager to be acceptable in meeting the goal and intent of this element. For the community benefits, to revisit, cities generally that, that do this have used a percentage of revenues that range from 4% to 6%. Some incorporate a sliding scale based on the amount of revenue, such as 4% for the first 1 million in sales, 3% for the next 2 million in sales, et cetera, et cetera. In addition to percentage, as an example, El Cerrito solicits one-time payments from operators. Most jurisdictions that require a fixed payment specify $100,000. Again, these typically are storefront dispensary locations, not delivery only. And a few jurisdictions do have delivery-only cannabis, because again, the dispensary model generates four, approximately four times the revenue of delivery only. Pleasant Hill currently, as an example, they allow two medical-only delivery operators, and they do have a community benefits requirement, but the openings they've advertised have not generated any applicants. For the environmental and financial impacts, the approval of this policy is not subject to CEQA. Approval of the policy will allow the city to move forward with the RFP process for the two new operator slots, and the city could realize financial gains via measures proposed by applicants who do successfully open businesses. And staff recommends to move to adopt the resolution approving the cannabis sustainability measures and community benefits policy. For an alternative action, this council could decide to not approve the policy and direct staff to prepare alternative measures and/or criteria. And staff is available if you have questions.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Do you mind going, thank you very much. Do you mind going back and showing us what the community benefits criteria are now? Not what, what we debated and rejected in September?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the one thing that has changed from this, from what was debated in September, is the minimum value of the combined community benefits efforts or combined community benefits elements has been removed.
So, it's this list?
It is this list.
All right, thank you. I, I got confused, because you were suddenly talking about what we basically eliminated. And I thought, wait a minute, where am I?
I apologize for that, no. It is, the, the individual elements here have been reviewed, and collectively, these were determined to be as furthering the goals of this program. But the, at the September meeting, the issue seemed to be focused on the $250,000 combined value as being a bridge too far for a delivery-only service.
Right, so the conversation, I think, and I, I was sitting in Long Beach trying to do it remotely, the conversation really evolved to one where, rather than set a minimum threshold, let the market set the, the minimum threshold. Can you go back to the slide which outlined the, please, the process?
There you go.
So, has, has staff had conversation about, so the city issues a request for proposals? How much, like, what timeframe, how many days, weeks, we would allow, we would be accepting?
We have not officially landed on a number yet. We have not developed the RFP yet. We are waiting to get the policy approved here. Typically, most RFPs, depending on what the service being sourced is, 30 to 60 days is the window.
So, there'd be a window where there's a deadline, and then that would be it. I mean, this will actually affect whether the competitive process works is also now going to be intrinsically tied up with. When you want the open market to, to basically work, you have to set the timeframe so that everybody has to come through the gate at the same time.
Correct.
And not game it. And let them wait for one to do it, and then they go, okay, we'll do that, we'll do what they did, which was a minimum, a lower minimum amount.
Correct.
Okay. If you're gaming it, you're, you're hoping that everybody just says it's only worth a dollar. Okay. And the period, how long do we think it will take to review and rank and select the two additional operators?
Honestly, I'm not certain about that. I don't know how long, how many applicants we would get, how many proposals we would get would be the, the core determinant on how, how long it would take.
So, we haven't done this before, but based off of other things that we've done, approximately 30 days to be able to receive them in, review them, rank them, and then be able to discuss them and meet, et cetera, based on similar kinds of processes elsewhere in the city.
In some ways, it's very similar to assessing bids to do construction work.
Construction work or CDBG grants, similar kinds of things.
Find consultants to do projects for you.
Correct.
And then, that still would, then beyond that, the two, the two that are selected would still need to secure use permits and go through that whole process. So, they really wouldn't be in operation for a while.
Correct. Yes, the, the process would be, the proposals would come in at the, the close of the window, the submittal window. Staff would review them. We would rank them based on the criteria up there as, as we'd review and see what everyone is proposing. And then, staff would go ahead and present to the city manager the list of, here's how we see the proposals. And from there, the city manager would make the recommendation to send the list or the rank order up to the council for consideration. Council then would have the option to select the two preferred ones, with top two presumably, to have to be, issued the operator permit, and then submit the application for a conditional use permit to the planning commission.
They only go through that process once, right? Once they're selected as the operator, the permit needs to be renewed on an annual basis, but they don't have to satisfy all this.
They only have to be selected once.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the council can also, I think the council in your prior discussion also talked about the potential, like you do with some other selection process, where, say, you get five applicants and you select two, but you could put one on a list, because we do have some past experience here with medicinal delivery where we actually awarded the two, but only Urban Joy actually opened up. And so, there's a possibility of having somebody that's kind of the first alternative, if you will.
And if we only got one, then we could reopen the process kind of at the same time next year to see if we got a competitive process?
Correct, correct. We, we, we do agree with the concept that you should, when you, when you're opening up one, you shouldn't just have it stand open all the time, but have it periodically come up so that you're getting, you're giving a broader group of potential applicants the opportunity to be involved in this so that you can let the market play more into what the community benefits would be.
Okay.
So, I have another question.
Sorry, yeah.
I have this, now that I played this, played this out, and I take full responsibility for coming up with, you know, making this brash statement remotely. Let's say we have Prospect A and Prospect B. And Prospect A says, I'll give you $100. And Prospect B says, I'll give you $50. And Prospect C says, I'll give you $20. Prospect C is not selected, but how do you address the discrepancy between the two highest bidders not even being? What benefit does the high bidder get for being the high bidder? And what benefit, what constraint does the second bidder get for being the second bidder?
Well, I mean, if I may, the, the way the selection process does go, as the, the individual steps behind the scenes, staff reviews the proposals and then confers with the city manager on whether these meet the criteria that we've established. And ultimately, the determination, I guess, would be if someone comes in with, with a proposal for $100, and the next one is $50. If we feel that that's kind of ridiculous, then we might not accept any of them.
It's somewhat of a rhetorical question, except it's what will happen.
No, the, the council has the discretion to deny the applications. And you can exercise that with the first, with whomever your highest rank is, if you think the highest-ranked person is even not sufficient in terms of their proposal to you. And you can also accept the first one if you think they are and reject the second one.
We could, are we allowed to accept the first one and challenge the second one to, to meet it?
You, you could put the, essentially, put that information out to the second. The council could do that as part of your consideration. The staff could do that as well, as they look at it and bring it to the city manager. And at that point, the applicant would then have the opportunity to decide whether or not they wish to meet them.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add, I mean, I think we're talking maybe a hypothetical where the first three selection criteria on this slide are all exactly equal, and so, it might come down to the fourth one on community benefits. But, you know, it's kind of like buying a house. I don't know that two applications are going to be the exact same, and, and they're a trade-off. So, I think we'd be looking at, obviously, the sustainability measures and community benefits, obviously, in conjunction with experience and qualifications, quality of application, to determine, on the whole, do they meet the threshold that this is a, a company we would recommend issuing a permit to?
And I agree with what you said. It's kind of like buying a house, but usually, you're not selling two houses at the same time where you're trying to make, you're trying to create a competitive environment, but at the same time, at risk of creating and, being accused of creating an uncomparative and an unfair playing field subsequently. So, I, I'm not sure we can answer it. I just, tonight, as more importantly, I want to be sure that we have realized where this could come down and what our alternative action steps could be in order to address this.
So, on behalf of all of us, I think we've heard what you've said and asked for, and we're relying on the open market, you know, criteria to be able to come up with, you know, the private sector's best offer forward. And then, ultimately, we will do our job as staff to evaluate against the criteria, assuming that you adopt it tonight. And then, ultimately, you as council will have the opportunity to reevaluate that and look through your lens.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No, I think we're set. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We're going to go ahead and open the public comment period now. And if you're joining us here in person, please come to the lectern. And Renee has already filled out her yellow speaker card. Thank you. If you're joining us by Zoom and would like to address the council on the sustainability and community benefits criteria policy, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. Good evening, Ms. Lee, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you again. I wanted to talk about a couple of things. I heard the mention of Rossmore a couple of times tonight. Rossmore, represented by the GRF safety proposal, which we clearly need. The cannabis affair that was attended by Councilmember Wilkson, DA Diana Beckton. It was a fantastic day, and when he talked about what was going on outside, that was our new industry. It was the new cannabis industry we have from Concord, Martinez, Pacheco, San Pablo. They were represented to show you that the community is here and that we're willing and waiting for Walnut Creek to get it together. We have Urban Joy here. They are fantastic. We're so proud of the fact that we have a reputable agency. I know you guys have a lot of work ahead of you. I have a few questions. I, I have spoken before about considering people that already live or work in Walnut Creek. We have a number of people that have gone outside of Walnut Creek and started businesses and actually live in Walnut Creek. They understand our community, which is different than Concord or Pacheco or other places. There may be a way you can give extra points for people who actually live in Walnut Creek, and they may help in your selection process. I've gone through these through the Board of Supervisors, through Concord, through Walnut Creek, I hear with Martinez. It works out. It all works out with the point system. I think you have to be, you have to allow Urban Joy to be competitive in this field. They're, they're working very hard to support our residents in, in Walnut Creek. They're the only business that was willing to come up and take the, the opportunity to do this. And as you heard, there's another one that we may not get anybody else. And I would ask that you, once you go through the proposals- And I would ask that you, once you go through the proposals, that you put them out to public hearings so we all can see what you're doing, because this is a community interview. It's going to be a businesses that we all use, and so the community can see how you're doing it, which is very, turned out to be very important in Concord. So, thank you for your work. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Any other speakers here in the chamber or that would like to address the council? Not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and turn to Zoom.
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Any questions of staff? Mayor Protem Silva.
So, I fully support the community benefits and the sustainability criteria. I just want to ensure that this is not a rolling, open enrollment period, because I don't think it creates that same competitive environment. So, we might do this in early 2023, and then if we get an opening, then we open it, and we might have to have a conversation about how we, there's no, if we get one open, if we get one opening, then we may, are we able to have the conversation then about how to do it, given that there won't be competition for the?
Yes, the council, well, we obviously wouldn't know that when we do it until we actually.
No, exactly.
But, once you get the results back in, the council will be able to consider all of the applications, be that more than one or one, and decide whether or not you wish to go back out or extend a period or whatnot. We are hearing very clearly that the council, at least some of the councils so far, are talking about having fixed periods, and staff supports that and appreciates that. And so, that is something that we could, you know, we could incorporate into the direction tonight, just in the way of a motion if the council wanted to do that. We have some language available if you want to consider that. We also are aware, based on the council's prior direction, as reflected in the staff report, that we are working with Urban Joy right now, anticipate their individual application to come back to the council likely at the November 15th meeting, and that will be one that the council would consider, independent of the other two, of the other positions that might be available, which I think, Erica, we would anticipate going out in January for the other two. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Then, Mr. Maddis, just following up in response to Ms. Lee's question about that, the applicant's information being publicly available, would that all be disclosed as part of the staff report and who the top two bids were?
Yes, it would. The way that the process is set up right now is that the, you know, the applications come in, the staff does the initial review, they make a recommend, they make a report to the city manager, the city manager then decides that what goes forward to the council in terms of, in terms of ultimate recommendation, and then the council at a public hearing would actually make the decision. All of the information that the city has with regards to the application would be then brought forward to the city council and would be available to the public.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, motions?
I was willing to make the motion. I was going to be pleased to make the motion, except there, and I remember there's an amendment in our packet, so I was gonna ace this little sucker, but it turns out that now I have to worry about the dates, and what do you need from us for that part of the?
Anticipating that the council might discuss some of these issues, we've prepared language for a supplemental, for, I want to be clear, this is an additional motion in addition to approving the policy that's before you tonight, and that's the revised policy that's before you. So, we'll pass that out to the council now. If the council's interested in this language, you could use this to form the motion that goes along with the approval.
Am I hearing you that there's two motions or just one?
It's really, it's a motion to approve the community benefits policy as it's been revised and presented to the council tonight.
Okay.
Along with this additional language, if the council's interested in this additional language.
Got it.
And that includes the sustainability policy, yes.
Does this language, please affirm, city attorney, that this language gives us the ability at any point in time to encourage a potential operator to improve their offer?
It doesn't specifically say that, but that's within the council's inherent authority when you consider these applications, and so, to the extent that we're, to the extent that the council is aware or wants to make the applicants aware of that possibility, then we can reflect that into the RFP as well, too, that, you know, if you think about it in a different context, there are proposals that go out that involve a process called your best, your last and best, or best and final offer approach, and we can incorporate that in so that if you did reach that situation where you got one, what you thought to be very competitive application and one, you know, less competitive application, you could make kind of a final, you could make an offer to the applicant to see whether or not they'd be willing to match that.
In the same way, we could say just no.
Or you can just say no, correct.
And only award one. Okay, thank you.
Because before you make the motion, and you're gonna ace it when you do, I know it.
The stress gets harder and harder.
The one-month time period, do we need to be that prescriptive? Is it, I mean, there is going to be a fixed time period. I think that that was what we were concerned about, is that it could be this loose thing, and it wouldn't really be competitive. It will be a fixed time period, whether it's 60 days, but could we just leave that to staff's discretion?
You could, you could say a fixed time period, a fixed period of a short duration, something like that, if you wanted to say that, rather than a 30-day or one month. From a practical standpoint, sometimes when we do RFPs, if you're around a holiday or something like that, you give a little bit more time.
Yes, which is essentially here in the last line, if a new permit slot becomes available, then it's a limited time period in which to submit application. Okay.
Another crib note thing coming, okay, okay, here we go. Are you ready? I move that we accept the, oh, shoot, the presentation as made with the amendment for that was there this afternoon via the red line thing where it was crossed out. Do you remember that, Steve?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and then additionally, we're going to add a motion to direct staff to consider Urban Joy's application and community benefit sustainability measures program at a city council meeting in November, and two, to direct staff to prepare and release an RFP for the remaining permits with such RFP containing a fixed time period of a short duration for potential operators to submit applications to the city. Review of such applications shall be consistent with the terms of the RFP and the Cannabis Selection Procedures Resolution. Furthermore, if a new permit slot becomes available, a new permit slot will also be subject to an RFP with a limited time period in which to submit an application.
That's fine. I would just note for the record that the first part of your motion was to adopt the resolution as it's been amended.
I found that language in here, so I'm, absolutely, I said that now. Thank you.
I'll second that eloquent motion.
I think we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Haskew.
Yes, of course.
Councilmember Darlene.
Yes, of course.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Francois.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you, thank you, staff. Thank you, Urban Joy. We're moving, we have no other items, so we are.